Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. We're glad to have Pastor Juan Lee with the United Methodist Church with us this morning. He's going to come and lead us in the invocation. And if everyone will please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Let us pray. O dear Lord, as we come together in this time and place, we give you thanks for this day, brand-new day, full of opportunity to serve you and to serve your people. O Lord, especially in this season of Lent, we are reminded that we are in need of your grace, saving grace. As we look across the nations, we still see violence, wars, divisions, and people suffer. But, O Lord, we find hope in you, for Jesus came on earth as the light, and darkness will never overcome the light. So, Lord, help us to be the people and to be the community where your kingdom be realized. And, O Lord, I especially pray that you will bless our leaders in this community with all the public servants, teachers, and police officers, firefighters, and those who work to serve people. O Lord, I pray that you will pour your blessings upon them, grant them your strength and wisdom, so that we will be the community where neighbors love one another. And, O Lord, you are a God who incline your ears to the poor and care for the needy. So, Lord, help us to follow the footsteps of Jesus, his service, humility, and love. And I pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Juan. I'd like to officially call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for March 7th, 2023, the AM meeting, and ask Supervisor Campbell if she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an agenda before us. Any additions or deletions to the agenda this morning?
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the Board to consider adding, in addition to the agenda, an Emergency Management Professionals Week proclamation, and that would probably fit well at 4:02.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, the consent agenda. Turn this over to our county administrator, John Eggerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the Board. We have three items on the consent agenda this morning. Under item A, the Board will consider acceptance of a grant in the amount of $640 and appropriation of the funds which were received by the Sheriff's Office from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice. Under item B, the Board will consider acceptance of a donation to the Sheriff's Office. The donation is valued at $6,198. And under item C, the Board will consider approval of five budget amendments for the school capital fund in the amounts of $1,638,306, $401,096, $530,000, $351,828, and $1,985,532. These transfers reflect ARPA funds, a DEQ electric bus grant, and ESER III federal funds which addressed capital projects, including the renovations at Floyd T. Benz Middle School and other maintenance projects that were contained within the CIP.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, moving on to the minutes. Any changes to the minutes for the February 7th AM or PM meetings?
Move the minutes be approved.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have one item of general county business. The Board will recognize Culpeper County employees with years of service awards. This is a great thing today, and we really appreciate our county employees. We have some fantastic county employees, and this is a good day that we always try every year to recognize some of the employees with years of service. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As it does annually, the Board is, as the chairman said, going to recognize employees who have reached milestones of five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30 years of service. Today, we recognize 57 different employees, and those 57 employees have provided a total of 685 years of service and are being recognized for reaching the particular milestone and their commitment to the dedication and dedication to the county. Today, as we have the past couple of years, we'll read those names, starting with five and progressing through. And just when we get to the 25- and 30-year awards, we will ask those folks to come forward and receive their pen and certificate from the chairman. The others will receive those over the course of the next day or so. So I will try not to mess up any names and to run through this list of dedicated employees, and thank you on my behalf for everything you do for the county. First, Randall Ballinger with the Sheriff's Office. These are five-year employees. Sandra Bates with the Treasurer's Office. Erica Bachman Outland with the Sheriff's Office. Ashton Beard with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Steve Brock with Parks and Recreation. Vernon Carter with the Sheriff's Office. Faith Emel with the Sheriff's Office. Samantha Fincham with Human Services. Jarrett Fulcher with the Sheriff's Office. Carol Granger with the Library. Nikolai Gravina Kersell Airport. Joseph Coontz Criminal Justice Services. Jennifer Love Emergency Services. Lawrence Outland Sheriff's Office. Erica Slaughter Criminal Justice. Jessica Tarion Human Services. Dustin Thorpe Sheriff's Office. Nicholas Whalen Sheriff's Office. And those are our five-year employees. Moving now to those with 10 years. Oscar Butler with the Sheriff's Office. William Collins with the Sheriff's Office. Joe Curtis with the Sheriff's Office. Kayla Davis, E-911. Angela Devers, Sheriff's Office. Dana Dodson, Sheriff's Office. David Duro, Sheriff's Office. Bernard Fagin's Sheriff's Office. Christopher Hibbs, Sheriff's Office. Ethel Holmes, Sheriff's Office. Scott Jenkins, Sheriff's Office. Gregory Jenkins, Parks and Recreation. Marshall Keen, Sheriff's Office. Jonathan Kearns, Sheriff's Office. Richard Kilby, Sheriff's Office. Fulton Lucas with the Sheriff's Office. Robert Vale with the Sheriff's Office. Ann Walker with Planning and Zoning. And Monica Warner with Human Services Head Start. Those are our 10-year employees. And with 15 years of service, Jane Cresswell, Environmental Services. Nancy Delaney, Library. Melissa Hart, Registrar. David Kemp, Options. Joe Coontz, Parks and Recreation. James Ratliff, Building Department. And Jenny Rosenfeld, E-911. 15 years of service. Those employees who have reached 20 years are Brenda Clark with Real Estate Assessment. Kathy Clevenger at the Library. Georgette Hawkins, Finance. Barbara Jones in the Treasurer's Office. Chad McKnight, Sheriff's Office. Kimberly Seibert, Animal Services. And Marissa Sorey, Human Services. Now, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we'll move to those with 25 years, and I think the chairman's going to go down front. And when I read your name, if you would come forward, if you're present, starting with Tim Beal with the Airport. Tim is not here, but Tim has 25 years at our airport, so congratulations to him. Thomas Buckley, Sheriff's Office. Betty Hall, Sheriff's Office. Mark Nowaki, Victims Witness Program. Dorinda Pollan, Human Services Head Start. And those are our employees with 25 years. We have one employee today at 30 years, and that's Pam Sheermyer of Planning and Zoning. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart for everything you do. You make my life easy, so much appreciated.
Okay, another good item we have on the agenda today is the add-on that the county administrator added on for EMS Week and EMS Proclamation. John, I'll turn it over to you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received a request from the Virginia Emergency Management Association to consider proclaiming the week of March 19th through 25th of 2023 as Emergency Management Professionals Week. And I thought that was well worth recognizing, so I do have a proclamation today, which I would be happy to read into the record if that's the Board's pleasure. And did want to point out that we invited today Bill Ooten, our EMS Director, and William Martin, our E-911 Director. And Doug Monaco is here for the Fire and Rescue Association Volunteers. So thank all three of you so much for what you do. And, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read this into the record?
Yes, if Bill and William and Doug could come up, please, to the podium.
This is a proclamation in recognition of Emergency Management Professionals Week, March 19th through 25th of 2023. Whereas emergency management team of Culpeper County and the Commonwealth of Virginia worked tirelessly behind the scenes to create safer, stronger, more resilient Culpeper in the midst of national disasters, pandemics, civil unrest, terrorism, and other man-made and natural threats and hazards. And whereas every emergency begins and ends locally, and whereas emergency managers are considered vital to essential services that assist the county of Culpeper to prepare for, respond to, and recover from emergencies. And whereas emergency managers develop emergency plans and procedures, organize training, including first responders and community partners, manage, lead, and provide skills and resources to minimize the impact of disasters, work with state and federal agencies to find the most effective methods of disaster recovery to increase the safety and security, as well as build business continuity. And whereas the role of emergency managers in creating a safer, more resilient community is more important now than ever, now therefore, we, the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the third week of March as Emergency Management Professionals Week in the county of Culpeper, and encourage all citizens to honor the Culpeper Emergency Management Team, including our dedicated volunteers, and recognize their service behind the scenes and their commitment to the health, safety, and welfare of all who live and visit Culpeper.
Well, I mean, I'll be the first one to congratulate you all for the people that you all represent on your teams. You leaders do a fantastic job, but the people that you represent are amazing, and we talk about it a lot, how sometimes we take EMS for granted until they come to our front door where there's a problem in our household, to where they come and take care of us, support us, make us feel safe in the community, and we appreciate y'all. And I know even the last five years with COVID and how smoothly we've, I think, gotten through the COVID era. And it's because of you all, your leadership, the teams you represent, your employees out on the front lines, putting their lives at stake, putting their health at stake. And it's been amazing working with you all. I know many of us up here have been working with you all for the last four or five years during this crisis. And not only have we gotten through this time, but we've accomplished so many things. And it's because of you all out there, working with us, working out there with the citizens, generating mobile stations for testing, and being proactive, helping out the hospital and Virginia Department of Health as far as giving vaccinations and other things that I could bring up, but we had more time. But it's been amazing, and I applaud you all, and we really appreciate everything you do and the people you represent. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No old business, no items for new business. Committee reports. Supervisor Underwood and Public Works.
No action items, sir.
Okay, I don't believe there were any action items for building and grounds. Rules, Mr. Bates.
Mr. Chairman, the committee brings forward a motion to maintain the current county zoning ordinance as it pertains to the keeping of chickens in the R1 residential zoning district.
Can I get a second? Second for discussion purposes by Supervisor Rosenberg. Okay, open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I opened a bit of a can of worms when I posted about towns' changes relative to chickens, which got a lot of people focused on county changes. And we've had a lot of citizen impact, or a lot of citizen input since then. I believe it would be in our interest to find a way to permit chickens in R1. So I don't know which committee we would send this to, or how we'd go about doing it, but I think we need more discussion. What I would suggest is, I don't know that we, well, we have it seconded, so I guess we are going to have to take a vote on this motion unless, well, no. I move we table it for 30 days and send it back to rules.
Anybody else?
I too received a lot of input about this. Being that we are a rural county, this is an R1 residential zoning district, but it has larger lots on the outskirts of where our main density is. And so I agree that we need to have a little more discussion on it and see what the impacts really would be.
My table and sending it back to rules?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. We already had a motion. We have two motions now.
Two motions.
I think we already had a motion.
This is where we get Robert's rules of order. I think I did that correctly, if not.
I think we have to, yeah, we have to facilitate the first motion first, I believe. All right, so on the first motion, as per the agenda item, to maintain the current county zoning ordinance, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay, so the ones that opposed, please raise their hand. Okay, so we had two of us over here that were in favor, and we have five that are not in favor. So now we move on to the second motion, to table. Okay, so all in favor of the motion to table it to rules for next month, signify by saying aye.
Hold, Mr. Chairman. Before you call, I'd like to amend that motion that if there's no other need for the Rules Committee that don't make it 30 days, do you have enough that you have to have a Rules Committee meeting this month? Would you make that 60 days, that way we can pick it up?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so all in favor of that motion, modified by Supervisor Rosenberg, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay. You got that, Deputy Clerk Ellis? Thank you. All right. Mr. Bates?
Mr. Chairman, the committee brings forward a motion to refer a proposed amendment to the Light Industrial Zoning District, which would increase the height limit from 45 feet to 75 feet to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the committee brings forward with no recommendation, the potential amendment to Chapter 15, weapons of the Culpeper County Code. And with this, I can maybe get John to elaborate on that a little bit.
Get a second first.
There's no motion.
I thought there was a motion. You made a motion, right?
Brings with no recommendation.
No motion, okay. All right, sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the Rules Committee was discussing primarily the potential of making an amendment to County Code, Chapter 15, which speaks to weapons, and imposing potentially a limitation that it would be unlawful to shoot a firearm within 100 yards of any regularly occupied structure without advanced permission of the owner or occupant, subject to exceptions. And there's a lengthy list of exceptions. This piece of code was looked at, I think, from, Mr. Bates might be able to remind me, Prince William County, I believe. And it was drafted and inserted into Chapter 15 after the Rules Committee meeting by our county attorney for your consideration today. So it came forward with no motion. If it's the desire of the Board, it could be authorized today for an advertisement for public hearing. This is County Code, it does not go to the Planning Commission, but it's really just open for discussion this morning. There have been some various concerns raised by various citizens of the county and some pressure for us to look at this type of issue, so that's why it went to rules, per the chairman of the Rules Committee, and it's here for your open discussion this morning.
Mr. Chairman, if I could start this off, as the county administrator has brought up, there has been concern through several citizens in the county that live in the higher-density areas. And the way our county code is currently written, it leaves a lot to be desired with the ability that law enforcement has when it comes to controlling what somewhat classifies reckless handling of a firearm. You know, again, as Culpeper is growing, I don't think that this is something that needs to be applied to zoning districts. It just needs to have, as I've said in the past, you can't really legislate common sense. But again, it's hard to sit idly by when things are happening that could possibly endanger someone's life or property. That said, I think that the ordinance, the way it's proposed, adds a lot more clarity to what you can and can't do in close proximity to other houses. So with that, leave it to comment.
So I understand the issues that we've been having, I've heard them in my district as well. The thing about having 100 yards from a regularly occupied structure, we have residents encroaching in on every aspect of agriculture, hunting, open lands, all of that kind of stuff, and they're building 50 feet off of property lines. So now you're prohibiting people sitting on their own, within 100 yards of their property line, from being able to control the deer population on their fields, to be able to control any type of nuisance. It's a slippery slope that we would be going into by forcing 100 yards from a regularly occupied structure. I want safety in all ways, shapes, and forms, but like we said, I don't know how you legislate common sense.
The way this is proposed, you're talking about hunting on your property within your house. If it's your house, or say if it's in here having permission from your neighbor's house, if you're within somebody, within that 300 feet, that's not going to limit you if you have permission. If it's situated so that it's not going to endanger, and your neighbors are fine with that, that's another part of it. And hunting, you know, rodents, wildlife, whatever, off of your property in your house, that would not apply to this ordinance.
So the, one of these, so the discharged guns for hunting is allowed within that 100 yards without permission?
No, the state code actually says right now, the state code says that you cannot hunt within 300 feet of an occupied dwelling or state road, public road. And that's pretty much what our county ordinance is mirrored off of.
So we're just trying to add that not just hunting, just any type of firearm discharge?
The discharging of a firearm, but again, if you look at item one, when it talks about having an approved trap or skeet range, hunting preserve, it's not limited to where you can't do it, but we just need to keep safety in mind when you're doing it. And I think the exceptions, I mean, I may be wrong, but I think it has a pretty good coverage of what you can still do.
I see it being a very slippery slope, even with the...
I don't disagree with that. And again, let me just, for the record, say that I am not in favor of restricting any firearm, owning firearms, but as this county has grown, it just seems like common sense has kind of gone by the wayside. And, you know, again, I don't want to be the one that sat by and said, well, you know, these people called me about this, and now someone's got a bullet hole through their house, or their kids were, you know, playing in their back field of their property or backyard, and someone's firing potshots across the property line, you know, I couldn't, I don't want to have to deal with that. I mean, that would, that's bad, so.
Pretty sure that's still illegal, isn't it?
Right, yeah.
Isn't it illegal to shoot at somebody's house? I would think.
Intentionally, but if you're not looking at a good backstop.
I think even unintentionally, it's illegal to shoot at somebody's house.
Again, if you're not, if you're not confident on your backstop, or you're shooting over the crest of a... the crest of a hill, that's where the problems lie.
Mr. Chairman, our county has grown, and we have a lot more people in residential areas, but this problem is not just in residential areas. If you recall, we had a constituent come before us, I want to say in October, from the Mitchells area, which is out in the country, and he had issues with people on the property line, shooting across his property. There was no way to control that at this time. I think this, as it's written, is, one, it's common sense. You really shouldn't be shooting within 100 yards of somebody's house. If you are on a farm and you're trying to control varmints, deer, other things, I believe that you could move in 100 yards and probably still accomplish the same thing. And while we don't need to be in a nanny state that controls everything, we do have some people that need to have some regulations, and I think this is a very common sense approach that we should move forward with.
Okay, anybody else? Supervisor Rosenberg?
Yes, sir. Given the fact that it came out of the committee with no recommendation, and I think there are differing views here, would we be the problem with the board advertising public hearing, and let's get some public input through a public hearing, and then we move forward from there?
I would second that motion.
Is that a motion, Supervisor Rosenberg?
I can make it one.
Since you already have a second, it's probably a good idea.
I took it as a motion.
All right, how about further discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to support the motion, just because I don't want to advertise prospective increase regulation, much less support prospective increase regulation.
Okay, anybody else? All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay, we have two, I believe, that oppose Supervisor Underwood and Supervisor Campbell, Ms. Ellis. Motion carries. Okay, moving on, Economic Development Director Brian Rothenmel is here. He will give his monthly report.
Morning, board members. Today we're going to talk about Choose Culpeper Farms. This is part of strategic, our strategic plan, goal 3.1, to grow the Choose Culpeper Farms brand. We launched the website, chooseculpeperfarms.com on February 1st. We announced that on Facebook. We had over 62 shares. I actually checked it right before the meeting, we got up to 67. So it's definitely spread throughout the community, which is something we were looking to happen, and rather organically. This gives us a place to point consumers, vendors, and farmers for information about our farms on the website. We'll kind of dive in to each section here shortly, but I think it's very aesthetically pleasing, and I like looking through the scrolling pictures that go through on the top here. On each section, you go through, and you can see for horses and everything that is associated with service providers there. For products, people that sell meats or produce, especially products, eggs, or going to the farmer's market, you can click through. It'll bring you, so if you click on meats, it'll show you farms that are selling certain types of meats and how to contact them. So it gives them an opportunity to get to a greater market than they currently are perhaps reaching. With the visit farms, you can see we have information for the farm tour, wineries, breweries, distilleries, farms that are open to the public for tours, nurseries, and then also a calendar of events that farms can add to. Educational resources is for our community, so community organizations, recipes, agriculture in the classroom, just things that will give you general information about agriculture. And then education for our farms, things that they might be looking for, that will be in the for farms section. They can do things that if they're selling wholesale, if they are looking to post jobs. Also, we have information for the Farm Bureau and the CFC Farm and Home Center. And then the highlight section will be our kind of a news section, or a blog, if you will, where we can write articles, write things that will highlight information about agriculture. Now, the strategy for releasing this, our first is to bring awareness to local farms. If you have something to sell, and you need to get it to a local market, we can put you there. If you have a service to provide, we can put you, we can give you a place to display. We are constantly updating this, so as new farms reach out to us or learn about it, or we meet new farms, we're able to add them quite easily. With relationships, that gives us an understanding of their needs and concerns, that also allows us to adapt the website. We can add, subtract, adjust, we can do that all in-house, and Mrs. Prince and I can handle that quite easily and quickly. Once we get those relationships, we can then start to impact the sector as best where we can. That could be bringing education series locally to help farms. The Central Virginia Small Business Development Center, they're trying to get more into agriculture as well. We're on kind of a ground floor with them. We've already hosted one event, co-hosted one event with them back in the fall, and we're looking to do more of that as they expand their offerings, that we can bring them here to Culpeper. And then also, this allows us to start looking around the state to see other policies and strategies that are working. One example, already had a conversation with my counterpart in Goochlin County, they're hosting kind of an ag day, and was emailing about what that entailed for them and see what we can bring locally. Maybe there's some strategies that they're utilizing, or strategies we're utilizing that they want to bring locally. So that's kind of where we are with Choose Culpeper Farms. We're excited about this. If you know any farms that are not on it, we're always happy to add them. We love adding the farms and getting more information out there.
Okay.
Brian, I've got a couple, I don't know if I'm comments or suggestions maybe, but let me just say first off, working with Farm to Table, you guys have knocked it out of the park. I mean, I've gotten more compliments on the website and how well it's working. Going forward, I've been contacted by the new leadership at the local ag center here, and I would like to see, as this goes forward, that we start branching off into some of the bigger areas of the county, one being the Ag Enterprise, the COA, some of the larger grain producers in the county, where we're shedding light on, you know, more of a blanket coverage of the county as a whole. I do know that, you know, the ag center out there, they're looking now to try to keep more of the local cattle running through their facility versus going over the mountain or out of the county for sale. So just something that, if we could keep that in mind going forward...
Yeah, we definitely can. I think I said the lines, this is kind of a slow drip for us, and we're just trying to get the pot a little bit more full each and every day, so we appreciate that, and we definitely can reach out.
Thank you, again, a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, administrators' report, John?
Mr. Chairman, I will be brief. Just a reminder that following closed session today, we do have a budget work session, and then we have a budget work session scheduled with the schools on March 16th at 4:30 PM. And then we'll be back in April to talk about advertising tax rates in a public hearing and hopefully be reaching the end of the process. Just that update today.
Okay, thank you, John. All right, entertaining motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into closed meeting as permitted under Virginia Code, Section 2, 2, dash 37, 11, A1, 3, 4, 7, and 8, to, one, discuss and consider and interview prospective candidates for the position of county attorney; two, to discuss and consider the annual performance evaluation of the county administrator; three, consult with legal counsel and receive legal advice from the county attorney regarding the pending opioid litigation in the local and federal courts, including but not limited to the potential partial settlement of claims; and, four, discuss and consider the acquisition of real property located in the Cedar Mountain District, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county board.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you.